Good morning. We are happy to see each one of you here today. We want to welcome you to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We also would like to welcome those who are viewing us by way of television. We are honored to have three distinguished members of the hospital board here, Mr. Flowers, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Davenport. I believe they are the three that are here. We welcome each of you. I now call this meeting to order, and we shall now have our roll call.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hammond is on his way.
Okay, let's stand for our invocation and pledge. Let's pray. Father, we thank you this morning for your many blessings upon us. We thank you for the opportunity of gathering together as a community. We thank you for our community and for those who serve our community. We pray that you might be with this board this morning, give us the wisdom and the discernment to make those decisions that will best represent the needs of our community. These blessings, we pray in your holy name. Amen. Let's face the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion that we approve?
I'll hold agenda.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, there is a need to add a closed session to the agenda. It's not on the agenda at this point. That would be an attorney-client privilege.
Okay, you include that addition in your motion and second. Okay, let's vote. We do have one public hearing this morning, and that is about an economic development incentive. This is in connection with the item that we approved at our last meeting, and I would like to ask Ms. Yuhos to come forward and present that to us.
This project, as you know, is Project Speed. It remains with a code name. Besides this public hearing, the state also has one. We are still in what we refer to as a "but-for" situation. The package, as approved by the commissioners, includes an economic development grant. It also includes community college training dollars. It is a $50 million project. It includes 200 jobs.
Very good. I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this? Do please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have anybody signed up unless there's somebody in the audience.
Is anyone who would like to speak against, anyone who would like to speak period, do come forward. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
The we approve it.
I second it.
Motion to approve and seconded. Let's vote. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, we have two presentations, one for Dr. Juan March and one for Mr. Dave McCray. Do I have a motion that we approve both of these?
Second.
Let's vote, and I believe the manager and I will go forward and present these. We want to present this to you and let you know how much we appreciate all you do for our community. As you know, I served with you on the EMS Oversight Committee, and you did a fabulous job there. You have a passion for our citizens, a passion to help them, and we really appreciate that, appreciate what you have done, and we appreciate what we know you are going to continue doing in the future. Congratulations and thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
And our manager is going to read this resolution of appreciation.
For the audience, we have this beautiful framed resolution, and I'll go ahead and read it. It says, "Resolution of appreciation honoring Juan A. March, M.D., with the acronym FACEP, for his years of service to the citizens of Pitt County. Whereas Dr. March has served the citizens of Pitt County faithfully during his years at Pitt County Emergency Medical Services Medical Director from January 1995 to March 2013. Whereas Dr. March recognized the need and was instrumental in educating the citizens of Pitt County by producing a public service announcement for hands-only CPR that is being shown on the public access channel. Whereas Dr. March is dedicated to establishing better care for the citizens of Pitt County after they have suffered a cardiac arrest. He continually emphasizes the importance of quick intervention for the successful recovery of patients and constantly pursue better response times as well as better survival percentages. Whereas Dr. March was instrumental in the implementation of statewide protocol for Pitt County in 2009, allowing Pitt County to follow state regulations. Whereas Dr. March was committed to the education of EMS professionals in the Pitt County area and has been diligent in keeping emergency medical service employees up to date on their certifications and documentation. Now therefore it be resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor Dr. March for his commitment to the citizens of Pitt County, emergency and non-emergency EMS providers, as well as the Pitt County's 911 Center for his outstanding and admirable service to the departments of Pitt County. Adopted the sixth day of May 2013, signed by the Chairman Jimmy Garris and attested by our clerk, Ms. Hines."
Very good.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
If I knew you would like to start?
Just very briefly, it's been a pleasure to serve the citizens of Pitt County for the past 20 years, 15 as the medical director and five years prior to that as the assistant medical director. I can say that if you look at EMS, it's progressed a lot in the past 20 years. When I began in 1992 as the assistant medical director, we had one paramedic-level agency in the entire county. Today, the entire county is paramedic, and I think that is the biggest change we've had. With that, obviously, there's been a number of improvements in patient care. I can say, in fact, I could spend eight hours telling you about all the details and all the improvements we've made, but obviously, you folks probably don't want to listen to all those details. Instead, I just want to thank everyone who's made that possible. First, all the captains of all the EMS agencies out there, both current and past, who've made those changes, as well as all the EMS professionals, some who are out in the audience today. Clearly, it couldn't have happened without all of them. I also want to thank all the county commissioners. In fact, most of you have been here for the past 15 to 20 years, and I can honestly, I want to thank all of you for all of your efforts, because clearly, without them, we would not have been able to make all these additions and changes to our EMS system. Before I end, though, I have to first and most importantly, thank my wife for all the effort and support she's given me through these years, because clearly, without her support, I wouldn't have been able to be here today. I also, again, before I finish up, just want to make you all aware that Dr. Ferguson, one of my partners, has taken over the role as a medical director, and you are in good hands. He's very well-trained and experienced in EMS and has a love and passion just like I do. I do not say goodbye to EMS. In fact, I, as you can see, still have my radio on. I turned it off for the meeting, though. Wouldn't want to interrupt it, but in fact, just yesterday, I was on two EMS calls, one actually in Eastern Pines District. And will continue to be an active member of the community and an EMS. So again, thank you all and appreciate all the work you've all done.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Mr. Gash.
Yes.
Dr. March is too much of a gentleman to really hit upon all of the things that he did, but he had two categories, as you know, being part of that original committee. That was that he was an expert. Secondly, he was a leader for all people, not just for a certain area, that he wanted to cover the totality of the county, and I admire him so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gash.
We'd like to ask Mr. Dave McCray to come forward. We have a resolution of appreciation for him also. Again, we want to thank you for all the services that you have rendered to this community. You have taken a little community hospital called Pitt Memorial Hospital and carried it to the great Vidant Medical Center, and we really appreciate all that you have done. That is a great asset to our community, creates many jobs, and we appreciate all your hard work and all your dedication.
Thank you.
Well, Dr. March, we have a resolution to read, and we could probably have had four or five of these in terms of all the achievements that Mr. McCray has made for the hospital, but we have tried to capture the highlights in this one, so if you will, I'll go ahead and read it.
I see.
It's a resolution of appreciation honoring Dave C. McCray for his years of service to the Vidant Medical Center and the delivery of health care in eastern North Carolina. Whereas Dave C. McCray has served the citizens of Pitt County faithfully during his 37 years of service, retiring as the Chief Executive Officer of Vidant Health. Whereas Mr. McCray, during his career at Pitt County Memorial Hospital as a physical therapist in 1976, was first appointed Chief Executive Officer in 1989 over the former Pitt County Memorial Hospital, now Vidant Medical Center. Whereas the original Pitt County Memorial Hospital/ Vidant Medical Center then became a system of 10 hospitals over 24 years, providing medical care in eastern North Carolina. Whereas Mr. McCray has served the citizens of Pitt County by leading what used to be the University Health Systems of East Carolina/ Pitt County Memorial Hospital from a 205-bed hospital to a large academic medical center that it is today. Whereas Mr. McCray ensured access to service for thousands of eastern North Carolinians by growing and nurturing a family of hospitals in rural communities and also expanding access to primary care in rural areas. Whereas Mr. McCray forged a strong and vital partnership with East Carolina University and the Brody School of Medicine that will continue to provide world-class medical and surgical care through Vidant Medical Center and continue to educate the next generation of health care professionals. Whereas Mr. McCray has served the citizens of Pitt County by his numerous volunteer positions, such as Chairman of the Greenville Chamber of Commerce, Board Member of United Way, and Chairman of the North Carolina Hospital Association. Whereas Mr. McCray has received the honorary Doctor of Science degree from East Carolina University in the fall of 2012 for his dedication to the education of future medical personnel. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor Dave C. McCray for his commitment to the citizens of Pitt County and eastern North Carolina for his outstanding and admirable service. Again, adopted the sixth day of May 2013.
Very good. Did I do what I'd like to say?
Yes, sir. Never give up an opportunity to speak. I couldn't help but think this morning, as I walked up these slippery stairs, that in 1975, I came up those stairs and saw this hospital in this building for the first time. On that day, I had lunch downstairs in the basement with Jack Richardson, who was the president of the hospital, and Kenneth Dews and Wilton Duke. And Wilton was chairman of the county commissioners, had been, as well as Kenneth, and Wilton was chairman of the board at that time. That year, in November, I sat on the back row for my first board meeting at the hospital, which happened to be in the old nurses dorm, which is the building next door. Some of you remember that. And I sat on the back row with Dr. Bill Loffus. Dr. Loffus sat beside me and spoke kindly to me, waiting for our turn to speak, each of us, and I thought he was asleep the whole time, but when his time came to speak, he stood up and he commented on several things that had taken place in the meeting as if he had been part of the conversation. And that was my introduction to Dr. Loffus in that early day. I also had the privilege of working with many, many physicians. Dr. March is just a great example of the work that's been done since those early days. Our job, my job, was to help make sure that we had the beginnings of leadership in place so that things could take place, as has happened with EMS service in this county and for eastern Carolina. And if you'll let me jump forward to the last, more recent years, sitting on the back row back there where we can keep an eye on them and keep them out of trouble are four past chairmen. Three of them were recognized at the beginning of the meeting. Kelly Barnhill is with us now. He's a past commissioner and a past chairman of our board and works with the health system to this day, and we appreciate his service and helping us to raise funds, as he did for the Boys and Girls Club and many other organizations. These gentlemen, Cassius Williams, Lawrence Davenport, Phil Flowers, Kelly Barnhill, have guided me in these last 20, 25 years. I think I've worked with 16 chairmen over the years, 13 of which during my tenure as CEO. Without the appointments that you made as commissioners, and some of you sat on that board and sit on this board, Commissioner McCallhorn, without Eugene James in 1975, meeting with me and the rehab committee of the hospital, I wouldn't be here today. I wouldn't have had the opportunity, the experience, the ability to guide us through what this document says without the leadership of these gentlemen and many other men and women in that organization. It's a family of 11,000 now that serves all of eastern Carolina, 7,000 of whom are in Pitt County alone. I'm so proud of that. I look at this and say, "I don't know who that fellow is," because it's not one person, it's hundreds of people who've done what's been done for Pitt County and for eastern Carolina. I am very, very grateful for the opportunity that you gave me many years ago to start down this journey, this path. I can assure you that you've got the leadership in place for the future. Dave Womack guided me through my retirement, held my hand practically. Arkenee is chairman of the system board now. Walt Pofol is chairman of the hospital board here in Greenville. You have great leadership in Dr. Dave Herman, CEO of the health system. You have great leadership and one of your own, in Steve Lawler, as the president of the medical center here in Greenville, with Brian Floyd and many others like those gentlemen, leading the organization. I feel like you're in great, great hands, and if there's any job that I had to conclude with, it was to put you in hands that will lead you and guide you to better places even than those of us who got you to where you are today. You're in good hands, and you've got a great future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, I believe we have some service awards, and Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Manager, just emoted.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If Florida Hardy will come forward, or Human Resources Director, will kick off our employee service awards. As we do on a quarterly basis, we are recognizing and honoring the workforce of Pitt County government, and we do this quarterly, and recognize our employees who meet milestones of a 5, 10, 15, 20, 25. We're stopping at 25 today, but normally it goes 30 and sometimes 35 years of service to Pitt County government. And as we recognize the tenure of these folks, it's important to note that their tenure shows a dedication to our organization and the citizens that they serve throughout Pitt County. We're going to start with the five-year category. We have before us this morning the different mementos and certificates that the employees will receive as we call them up. We'll just wait a moment here until we get all the board members seated. All right, well, we'll start with the five-year recognitions, and if James Brown with Environmental Health will come forward first. Jim Brown. Mary Carmen, PATS Transportation, Pitt Area Transit System.
Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
John Demery, Solid Waste and Recycling Director.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Demery, Solid Waste and Recycling Director.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Cynthia Farmer, Communications. Maria Hammack, Restra Dees.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Diane Holland, PATS System, Transportation, again, Pitt Area Transit System.
Congratulations and thank you.
Jim Gardner, Environmental Health.
Congratulations and thank you.
Vida Johnson, Detention Center. James MacArthur, Emergency Management.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
She wants a picture, please.
Get her to get.
Oh, yeah.
There.
Get us all in here.
Okay.
Demetrius Parker, Public Health. And our last five-year recognition is to Lawrence Tyson, Buildings and Grounds. Okay, moving to 10 years. Craig Bowns, Detention Center. LaChauncey Congleton, Sheriff's Office. Chauncey, I'm sorry, Chauncey. Jennifer Hardy, Public Health. Lori Stewart, Sheriff's Office.
Congratulations and thank you.
Our last 10 years to Beatrice Will Coxon, Detention Center. That's our tenure category. Moving to 15 years, we have Walter Guthrie, Sheriff's Office. Melinda Modland, MIS, Management Information Systems. Wallace Moore, Sheriff's Office. And our last 15 years to Renee Williams, Public Health. Give us applause, please. In the 20-year category, we have four silver-wrapped boxes up here, of which the employees, once you've served 20 years with Pitt County government, you have the privilege of picking a watch to watch the time click on your next 10 years-plus with the organization. And hopefully it'll be a very fruitful and beneficial for 10 years, both to the employee and to the organization. Romeo Garcia will come forward from Sheriff's Office. Dana Place, Sheriff's Office. If they don't attend, they don't get the watch. Just kidding. Natalie Ramsey, Sheriff's Office.
Social Services.
Social Services, I'm sorry. Social Services. You've been transferred. And our last 20 years to James Stansel, Detention Center. We now have four employees who have met the 25-year target in terms of service to Pitt County. Angela Garris with Social Services. I guess we should ask them, "Are you wearing your watch?"
Congratulations and thank you very much.
Congratulations. Alma Haddock, Social Services. Teresa Holt, Sheriff's Office.
Thank you very much and congratulations.
And our last 25-year recognition is to Glenda Nobles, Social Services.
And we have refreshments, so everyone is invited to come and participate in the refreshments. You can go in this door and come out this door. So let's participate. Welcome back to our meeting. We shall continue with our agenda. The next thing on our agenda is our public addresses to the board, and I don't believe we have anyone that signed up. Is anyone who would like to address us? Okay, we will move on to items for report. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, a few items to report to you on the board. A is the next meeting dates. You see there are three there. The May 20th, regular meeting at 6:00 p.m.; June 30th, regular meeting at 9:00 a.m. And if you would note, the third one, June 11th, which is a Tuesday, that is proposed to be your public hearing. Actually, it's the advertised or scheduled public hearing for your fiscal year 1314 budget. Item B, prior to that, obviously, you'll have your budget workshops. Those will begin weekly today, on Monday, May 13th, and run through Friday, the 17th. Those begin here in the meeting room at 8:30 a.m., normally run through about lunchtime. The following week is reserved for additional budget workshops if needed, that'd be May 21st, and then 23rd and 24th, again, 8:30 a.m. if needed here in this room. Item C is County Assembly Day, which is put on by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners in Raleigh. That is where representatives from all 100 counties go and meet and assemble to hear information about different bills that are being proposed and pending in the legislature, and also it allows county commissioners and managers and clerks and attorneys the opportunity then to go to walk the halls of General Assembly and call upon our senators and representatives to discuss those bills that are of interest to counties. Item D, the Pitt County Animal Control Advisory Board has asked me to announce to you and to the public in general that they're going to be holding a series of community forums. These are scheduled for June 5th, 11th, and 20th, and these are all from 6:30 to 7:30, and they're trying to gather public input as they develop a strategic plan for the animal shelter and support operations, and we'd like to hear from the public in regard to that. Item E, concerning the medical examiner's services to the Pitt-Green MSA metropolitan statistical area, you have probably seen in the newspaper two different articles talking about a cut and reduction in medical examiner autopsy services by the state. I have called the state medical examiner's office and asked what effect any of this would have on Pitt. I'm told that Pitt and Green would have no cut or reduction in service. Basically, all the remaining counties, I think there was maybe 24 total of the remaining 22 counties. the remaining counties, I think there was maybe 24 total of the remaining 22 counties, majority of their services was being funded through a federal grant. That federal grant is going away, and thus they're pulling those autopsies back to Raleigh. So I've been told that we would see no reduction level of service for Pitt. We would continue to pay what we currently budget in our budget, and autopsies are basically, cost is driven by statute, there's a set cost for what they can charge. So there was some question on that, so I wanted to let the board know that. Item F are different boards that the county is currently recruiting for, the EMS System Plan Oversight Committee, Pitt County Child Fatality Prevention Team, the Greenville Board of Adjustment, Avon Planning Board, and the Region Q workforce Development Board. I did have two other items. One is a ceremony that we're planning to celebrate a recognition of the Pitt County Solid Waste Recycling. This will actually be a luncheon that the board will be invited to, as well as other community groups. We've been ranked as number one in the state. Again, we've had this prestige or honor in numerous times in the past, but we're number one in the state for recycling, and we're looking at doing a ceremony and a luncheon at the location of Solid Waste Recycling. This will be Thursday, May 30th, at 11:00 a.m., and we'll be having a formal invitation. We're going out to you on that and further information forthcoming. Last item deals with economic development, not necessarily from the Development Commission point of view, but we are looking at researching the possibility of having some type of a policy for the board's consideration along the lines of a capital investment grant policy, possibly along the lines of what Greenville has recently put into place with their capital investment grant policy. This is, would be for what we consider a call of transformational projects, and would probably be in partnership with the different municipalities in Pitt County. They had a policy. Again, right now, this staff is just researching this. I'm working with the Development Commission. They're looking at this. This would be separate apart from the efforts that we do through the Development Commission with the legislative authority. If the county were to adopt this and consider funding this, it would not be through the current allocation of the tax rate for Development Commission projects. But they could, in effect, administrate such a policy if the board were to want to go down that road. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions of our manager? Do I have a motion? We approve the consent agenda.
Move.
Motion second. Let's vote, please. Our first item under Items for Decision is the approval of the affiliation agreement with Biden Medical Center. And Madam Attorney, are you going to address that?
Yes, I can introduce the item. Every 20 years, the affiliation agreement between the Brody School of Medicine at East Carolina University and Pitt County Memorial Hospital, now Biden Medical Center, must be reviewed and renewed, and that affiliation agreement is in your package. It must be signed by the entities noted, which includes the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. My understanding is that the other signing parties have approved the agreement, and it is now before this board for approval.
Very good. Any questions or comments? I will add that I was invited, as your chairman, to a meeting several weeks ago to review this whole agreement almost verbatim, and we had some changes, some suggestions, and this is the finished product. Commissioner McGlaughlin was, is on that board, and Commissioner Ward. So if you have any questions or comments, we'll entertain them. If not, I will entertain the motion.
I second it.
Just one question. What are the basic differences, if there are any, in the, this new agreement and what we've had in the past? I don't mean word-for-word, I understand.
I think there are just some minor changes. Mr. Lawler, would you go to the microphone and address that question?
Good morning. I'm Steve Lawler, the President of Biden Medical Center, and I want to thank you for addressing this particular item, as well as thank you for all that you do, because the affiliation agreement really is the result of vision, foresight by our county leaders, as well as members of this community, to make this a destination for teaching, as well as for healthcare. The main differences in regards to the affiliation agreement, other than just some housekeeping to change the names of the organizations and the entity, you know, really, I think, deal with, one, some language that the regulatory bodies that govern accreditation for medical schools wanted to see in the affiliation agreement to strengthen the commitment by both Brody School of Medicine and Biden Medical Center to the education of medical students, but also it creates, I think, a closer link between the university and the medical center in regards to accountability together to make sure that, one, we're training the best medical students and residents, and then, two, that we're working together to deliver the best care for this community, as well as the region. So much of it is housekeeping. Some of it was changing the names and of the organizations as they've changed over time, and then, more importantly, there's a language that really addresses some of the changes that some of the accrediting bodies were looking for, that accredited medical schools and teaching programs to make sure that we're compliant.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also say that this agreement, over the 20-year period, there's an annual kind of review where they all sit down, the entities that work on that committee or group, sit down and just kind of review over it again to see if there needs to be any tweaking or changes. So I was glad to hear that and understand that, because I think that's important.
And I think, finally, I think it's an example of the most successful public-private partnership between a county, a university, and a medical center, and how we've worked together over the past 40 years, really, to make sure that we're serving this community and the people of the region.
Of course, that was the purpose of the original agreement, to set forth and advocate and promulgate what you just said, and I appreciate your remarks.
Mr. James?
Steve, I have one question that always has concerned me several years. All right, the hospital makes, well, it's a nonprofit, but of course, we know they make a lot of money. They reinvest it. But the Brody School of Medicine, and I felt very sorry for Dr. Johnson when he came here, I'm sure you're familiar with what I'm talking about, they lose a lot of money, but yet the hospital makes a lot of money, and she was, of course, had to leave because of the loss there. And I don't, are you all working towards to make sure that the Brody School of Medicine has that ability to go forth, or everything, research and so forth, that they're all making sufficient funds, because there's less face in the state where you know what they're doing? Has that been talked about?
Yes, sir. That's a really good question, and Dr. Cunningham, my partner in all of this, was going to join me today, and I think, you know, this is really an example of county government at its most efficient, because you guys are ahead of schedule. But when I talk about the effectiveness of that public-private partnership, you know, we work very closely with the Brody School of Medicine to ensure that they've got adequate funds to carry out their teaching, research, and education mission, and, you know, we share our success. So, you know, we're blessed to have a medical center with great employees, and that's a destination for care and a destination for young men and women that want to learn how to be physicians, nurses, allied health professionals, and we share in our success with Brody School of Medicine. So every year, you know, we fund, and, you know, basically, we're purchasing services for them to teach and train residents and fellows, so we're paying them to do that. We're also providing financial support through medical directorship and through our chiefs of service. So we want some of that really smart folks' time that they have at Brody School of Medicine to help make our hospital better. So we do pass funds to the Brody School of Medicine to make sure that they're able to continue to achieve their mission and their promise to this region.
I know for that med school to be very successful, they have to have a lot of research, and that money comes kind of hard, and I was thinking about, well, I've thought about it for a long time, that the state of North Carolina, they kind of, especially now, they're not, they're not, but I know if the hospitals are making that much money, that some way that the Brody School of Medicine ought to be able to come in here and say, look, maybe we can do more things to bring in more funds for them, so that they can put those funds in research.
So we do support the Brody School of Medicine.
That's good, Steve. We appreciate that. The people I meet do appreciate it very much.
Any further questions? We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next item for decision is a resolution to maintain and support the current integrity and funding for the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, and Ms. Alice Keen is going to present that to us.
Move. We approve it.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions, any comments? Let's vote.
Thank you, Alice.
Thank you.
Next item is a extension of a conditional use permit of business staff. We approved that back in November. She has met all the criteria, but hasn't been able to get all of her things in place, and she's asking for a six-month extension, Mr. Redson.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve it.
Motion second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Thank you very much for that fine presentation, Mr. James. We also have a revised Greenville Urban Area MPO Memorandum of Understanding, and Mr. Rose is going to present that.
Actually, Darrell Vreeland with the Transportation, as the transportation planner with the City of Greenville was going to be here. I could go ahead, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, and run through it. You're familiar with the agreement, anyway. This, of course, is an update to our Memorandum of Understanding for the Greenville Urban Area MPO Metropolitan Planning Organization, and just to orient you a bit, I'm going to skip right to the map. The map on the screen pretty much gives you the boundaries for this organization. It incorporates not only the City of Greenville, but the town of Winterville, town of Avon, and also the village of Simpson, with basically a ring around all those municipalities of unincorporated Pitt County. All that said, there are some changes that we're looking at this time, and it deals with, there are two groups involved. One, an advisory group, which is the Technical Coordinating Committee, and we're looking at making some changes to the membership from the county's perspective. We are, in fact, should have been there, we feel like, a long time ago, a member from the Pitt Area Transit Board would be included in the blue names here, as you can see on the screen, as well as with the county engineer, now part-time, looking at bringing another planner on as a representative for the TCC as well. So those are two changes to the membership there. Even though the Transportation Advisory Committee, I feel like is a misnumber, Chairman Garris serves on that, they're pretty much the governing body for this group, and for the most part, that's staying intact. The other thing, it does put in writing the cost-share agreement for some of the activities that this group takes care of during a given year, and with that, that is based on the population of these areas. So with that, Mr. Chairman, those are the major changes, and you as the, one of the voting members for the TAC may want to expand on some of those.
I think you have explained it very well. The three changes are outlined in our agenda on page 53, anyway. Is any further questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
Move, Mr. James.
Second. Motion second. No further questions. Let's vote. Thank you very much. The next item is an appointment to our MidEast Commission. As you can see in your agenda packet on page 68, we have two applicants, and both of those are minorities, and the request here is for a minority appointment. Do you have any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I represent the board on that. What we are doing on the MidEast Board is those people who do not attend the meetings, we're trying to replace them with people who will participate, and he is recommending that a minority be appointed. So I don't know them, but I think if they recommend either one, whoever you want, and you have that choice, too, by the way, as chairman, to take and do that.
We have two applicants. Does anyone?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Maurice Whitehurst.
Okay. Motion that we appoint Maurice Whitehurst. Any further nominations? If not, let's vote on that. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, we highly recommend that those people that we appoint on these boards, that they do participate and they do attend these meetings, because that's what we depend upon, their input.
And we highly encourage that for members of all of our boards and committees, that they're ten. The next item is a reappointment to the Animal Control Advisory Board. The motion is that we reappoint Catherine Willis and Linda Mazur. What is your pleasure?
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. Thank you. We also have four reappointments to the PC Nursing Home and Adult Care Advisory Committee. They are Julie Banks, Walter Council, Heather Brown, and Cheyenne Baines. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second. Let's vote. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, again, I'm on that board representing, and we really need additional members. If we could just get them, and it's a very important board, and so we certainly encourage the people here in Pitt County to come out and volunteer for this.
We need the people to fill out applications.
Right, and the tribal is paid for on this particular one, and it's, it's a good thing for someone to participate. If they really want to help the senior citizens, this is one way that we can do it in these person.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. James. The next is an appointment to the Social Services Board.
On this particular one, Mr. Chairman, Charles McGlaughlin, I mean, Charles Miller's going to be going off. There are only one who has applied, and I, as a board member, would like to have an addition one to pick from. I mean, he might be the very best one, but I think we need a board that's important. We need to have more to take and to step forward, because it is a very, as you know, you serve on that board, it is a very important board, and we need.
Move. We delay that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion to delay?
Finish your last motion. I'm sorry.
Okay. Eugene James, please vote.
I haven't voted.
Okay, we have a motion to delay the appointment to the Social Services Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, and, Mr. Manager, you will advertise for applicants to serve on the Social Services Board. Next item is reappointments to the Physical Activities and Nutrition Coalition. There are five people there on page 94. Rose Simmons, Mary Gaskin, Stephanie Hart, Alice Keen, and Rita Roy. What is your pleasure?
I move for those appointments to be accepted.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Reappointments.
Let's vote, please.
They're actually reappointments. I think I said appointments.
Okay, the next item is an appointment to the Pitt County Board of Adjustments. You see the recommendation on page 102. Recommendation is for Ms. Fay Barefoot to serve there, recognizing that she cannot serve until after June the 4th, when her current term on the EMS Oversight Committee expires.
Show move.
A second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Thank you. Appointments to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. There are two of those listed on page 108.
Mr. Chairman, I serve on that board. Motion to approve both.
I second it.
Very good. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And our last item of business is the appointments to our Street Maintenance Committee. As you know, this is an item we discussed at our last meeting. We made a motion. You can see that motion on page 122, and Mr. Rhodes has come back to us with the recommendations that we can choose from on page 124 to serve on this very important committee. So I would like to take these by category. In our motion, we wanted two people, two homeowners, to serve on this committee, and as you can see on page 124, there are five people listed there, and I believe all five of those have agreed to serve. So what is your pleasure for the two people to represent the homeowners?
Show move.
Yes, Mr. Manager.
I just want to make a comment on that this committee would not be like the others, a three-year appointment. This is more of an ad hoc, as I believe, so it'd be a product of time limited unless it, hopefully it will take.
What we will do is, once we get the committee appointed, then I was going to ask that we agree on when we wanted them to report back to us. So, Commissioner Ward, did you have a motion?
I made a motion.
I made a motion.
But we only need two of them, and there are five of them. We need to select two from this group of five.
Mr. Chairman, I may ask, we need, I know that big developers are very important, but small developers are very important.
Sure.
And a big developer can do things that a little developer can't even think about doing, such as roads and so forth. I think we need to make sure that even though we have one big one, that we have one that can speak up for that small group. I think it's very important.
Okay. Let's focus on the homeowners right now and get two of those.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Tom Blevins and Jim Weiss.
Okay. We have two nominations, Tom Blevins and Jim Weiss, one from Indian Wells subdivision, another one from Woodmore subdivision. Any further nominations?
No, but again, are these big subdivisions or medium or what?
And the ones that we've heard from in the past, and they're kind of medium.
Okay, that's good, then. That's very good.
Okay. If there are no further nominations, do, let's vote on Tom Blevins and Jim Weiss to represent the homeowners. Okay. Now we have, in our motion, we're also to select two developers. And on our list here, we have four who have agreed to serve. What is your pleasure?
I'd like to nominate Don Edmondson as one of the two.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Brian Kitchell as a-
Okay. We have two nominations. Are there any additional nominations? Then we will vote on these two, Don Edmondson and Brian Kitchell. Okay. We have our two developers. We also, in our motion, wanted to have one engineer surveyor type. And we have two recommendations here, Mike Baldwin and Lyndwood Stroud. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, nominate Mike Baldwin.
A motion for Mike Baldwin. Any further nominations? Well, let's vote on Mike Baldwin. Mr. Hammond. Very good. Thank you. We also included in our motion to have one landowner on this committee. And we have not contacted any who are willing to serve. So I will just say to the board, if you know of any landowners that would like to serve on this committee, please let us know. And we'll bring it back to our next meeting.
Could I ask one question? I think this was Mr. James's idea, to have a landowner. And once the land is sold to a developer, there's no responsibility on the landowner's shoulders, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I was just-
So anyway, what I will do, what we'll do, is since that's included in the motion, just kind of leave that open. And if anyone knows of anyone, bring them back to our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Wayne Meads that's listed, he's listed as other citizens, is listed as a lot owner, engineer, and landowner.
Well, let's nominate him.
Are you nominating him?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I second it.
Motion made and second, that we have Wayne Meads to serve as the landowner. Any further comments or questions? Okay. And we also, in our motion, we wanted one county commissioner and one DOT representative. They are Tom Colson and Willie Jarvis. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, second. Thank you. Also, we wanted one member of our planning board. The current chairman is Faye Barefoot. The vice chairman is Lyman Hardy. What is your pleasure?
I move that we select Faye Barefoot to serve.
I will mention, Ms. Barefoot had deferred to Mr. Hardy. She would be willing to serve, but Mr. Hardy's been through this process. He's been on the planning board quite a long time.
Okay. Then I move Lyman Hardy, then.
Okay. Very good. We have a motion.
Second.
Lyman Hardy and a second. Any further discussion? Let's vote.
I wanted to say, I don't know how long they're going to be there. We need to get some-
Wait, wait. We're not through with this subject yet. Okay. The next item about this particular subject, do we have? Excuse me?
Mr. James.
Oh, okay. Fine. Thank you very much. Mr. James. Now, I wanted to ask our board, do we have any further instructions or directions to this committee? You can see the motion as it was stated on page 122. This committee is to develop a recommendation which will be brought back to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners that would generate, that would guarantee streets and subdivisions are built and maintained to DOT standards until taken over by DOT. And it is to be done in a way that is acceptable to developers and fully protects homeowners from street maintenance liability. Are there any further instructions we want to give this committee? If not-
I can say this, you're biting off a big kick, piece of a kick.
That is correct.
And you are, it's going to be impossible to take in the full field. Mark my word.
Nothing is impossible.
That's all right. Just wait till I tell you now.
And, Mr. Chairman, are these three staff members going to serve also?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Ward. Thank you. We also will have three staff members, our planning director, James Rhodes, our county attorney, Janice Gallagher, and our county engineer, Phil Dickerson, who will serve on that committee as advisors to that committee. And we thank you three for serving.
Mr. Chairman, one other question, based on the chunk that Mr. James referred to as this committee. I appreciate the fact that these people are willing to serve. I think when we usually set up a committee, we give a recommendation of what we would like for them to bring back to us. It does not mean that it has to be at that level. It means that when they meet and start talking, they will bring a plan back to us regardless whether it meets everything we put in that criteria or not. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't see a timeframe.
That was going to be my next question to our board. When would we like for this committee to report back to us?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend giving it at least 90 days.
Okay. That's good. So 90 days would be May, June, July, end of July?
I think no, not before that. Let's get through the budget and all of that, and then we can-
Report back at our first meeting in August.
Sense.
You okay with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do we need to vote on that, Madam Attorney?
You can just make that instruction, and that's-
Okay. Those are the instructions from our board.
Mr. Chairman, will we still be going after a landowner of some sort?
Well, we have appointed Mr. Meads there, who says-
But that was, I thought that was a completely separate category, other interested-
No, no. They were other interested parties that we could nominate to serve in one of these
But that's, okay, but what I see here, basically, is it's still lacking a landowner, a significant landowner is in Oxford.
That last category of other interested parties was not a category that you, as a board, had asked us to get people. But we couldn't fit those people in any other category in our mind, but you, as a board, qualified him as a landowner, so that's the person that picked. Okay. All right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, since Mr. James said it was impossible to do this, and I somewhat feel the same manner, but you have to start somewhere. Along that line, I think that, you know, we had Mr. Clark come up here of his own and bring information to us pertaining to it. I know he's a developer, but I think he would fall within that category that Tom was just talking about, as other interested person.
If he'd be willing to serve. He's so busy, I'm not, did he actually say he was willing to serve?
I don't know. If he was on that list up there, David, I don't know where he'd been contacted for a long time.
Well, let me say that we have, in the appointments we have just made, we have met the specifications of the motion. We have included the two homeowners, the two developers, the one engineer, the landowner, the county commissioner, and the NC DOT, and one member from the planning board. So we have met the criteria of the motion.
Mr. Chairman, and I agree with that, but, you know, all of this could be resolved if the DOT, and this is a big if, if the DOT, at the time a subdivision was granted, that they inspect and adopt the roads regardless of density, right then and there, this whole problem would go away.
That's right.
And, you know, I was accused in a paper of bowing to pressure, but the reason I changed my mind was because I discovered a loophole. The loophole being is that any builder can go in there, make all their roads private, establish a homeowners association, not the garden club variety, but a, you know, a legal homeowners association, charge them some nominal dues, it could be $10, $25 a year, and then regardless of the density of the subdivision, the builder walks away, and it's that homeowners association that are now stuck. If the DOT won't adopt it for 12 years, 15 years, eight years, some period, then guess what? We haven't done anything to really resolve the issue from today. That's why I changed my mind and said, whoa, wait a minute, I'm not going to agree to this until we, you know, that's looked at as well. Because that was part of that original thing. And it's like I said before, this is so important. It's important that we do, we get it right the first time. And it is a tall order.
And I agree with your comments. And I am sure that committee will discuss that in detail, because I am sure several of the people on that committee would want DOT to take it over as soon as possible. But, you know, you know what DOT said at our last meeting. But hopefully, working through it with this committee, we can come up with a new option.
Mr. Chairman, I asked that person in the last meeting, there's no way that we can guarantee that DOT will be able to take these old, because their schedule of maintenance and roads is something that is not put in concrete.
Right. Mr. James.
Now, don't get me wrong, Jimmy, I want subdivision to have good roads, and I have worried, that's the reason I know what's taking place. DOT will not take these roads in. I could take you right now on the other side of Welcome School, drive you on that road I was telling you about, a good road, we cannot get them to take it off unless they go there and spend a bunch of money. You've got a bunch of roads just like that, and that's where your problem is. And that's the reason I said you're just, if DOT doesn't cooperate, you can have all the doggone committees you want to have, and you aren't going to win.
Let me say one more final thing. We have, as a board, we have agreed to challenge a committee that we just appointed to answer all these questions and pursue all those options. And I don't think we need to try to solve the issue now, but we need to let them do it and then report back to us. And I'm sure-
Now, read that motion again. If you think you can, I mean, I'll read it.
We don't need to read the motion. We've already approved the motion and already appointed the committee. Very quickly.
Yes, very quickly. This is also an issue we need to take up and make sure our legislative delegation votes against changing the DOT formula, because even passing this, our committee could come up with the best solution possible. That formula changes, and the money goes away, and they're not going to take it.
I agree. I think we've discussed this subject enough. Okay. Let's move on. I believe we also have a closed session.
Don't we have to vote on this?
No, we said you had to vote.
We voted on.
I thought we had.
Madam Attorney, will you take us into closed session, please?
Yes. It has been suggested that this board go into closed session to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A3.
Do I have a motion that we go into closed session? Second. Let's vote on the motion to go into closed session. Mr. Hammond.
Mr. James. Mr. James.
I voted.
Oh, boy, my lord.
Thank you. We'll wait a couple of minutes, and then we'll go into closed session. Thank you, and welcome back. We have completed our closed session. We will now have our commissioner comments, and we will start with Commissioner Webb.
Thank you. Just a reminder that County Assembly Day is May 22nd. I know we already heard that. But again, we need to work on this funding structure for DOT, because we're going to get left out, as well as all of eastern North Carolina and all of western North Carolina, if the new formula goes through. And also, this week is Law Enforcement Officers Week, as proclaimed by the governor. And tomorrow was Peace Officer Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McGowan.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I certainly want to thank Pitt County for the solid waste recycling being number one in the state. Mr. Manager, I just wanted to know, how does that rank in the nation in terms of what you mean?
We'd have to look into that. I couldn't tell you nationally.
Yeah. Well, that's a great honor.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, I'd just like to make a plea for the other members of this Board of Commissioners to attend Assembly Day.
Thank you. Commissioner Owens.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ward.
No comment.
Commissioner.
I'd like to thank you for allowing me to be on the Rural Planning Board. But I'd like to remind everybody that this is going forward. There are still miles and miles of subdivision roads out there that have been done in the past, or that will be done between now and when we finally come up with a resolution that will fall into the old category. And there are many, many roads out there that need repairs. The people that are on it cannot afford it. And somehow or another, I think the board's going to have to come up with some resolution to that as well.
Commissioner James.